Thank you, Councillor Frosto for connecting.
Everybody, I'm online today. I just bury all. Could you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes.
We're gonna give a few more minutes for Councillor Hart to show up so we could have quorum.
My buddy, I miss Vicky Ripley. I miss my, I miss my, my seat neighbor, neighbor. I don't have a neighbor over here.
I'm glad you're not here tonight. You sound.
He's to provide public comment.
I thought you'd appreciate that, Councillor Ripley.
Yeah.
Should we call her?
Yeah.
Oh, there she is. We'll give her a few minutes to get situated.
Thank you.
I brought mine just in case.
Maybe it was cold. That's why it didn't turn on too well.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to today's City Council special meeting. Today is February the 12th, 2025. Uh, I call this meeting to order at 6:05 PM. And excuse my voice. I know I sound a little bit different and hopefully I don't lose it by the end of the, tonight. So.
I'm asking around you two.
No, I'm good. So we're gonna do a roll call. Um, for the record, Councillor Brosma has an excused absence. Uh, he's on vacation. Um, Councillor Vasquez asked for an excused absence and Councillor Frosto is online on Zoom. Do we have any objection giving Councillor Vasquez an excuse absence?
No objection.
No objection.
Um, also, all members of staff are here with the exception of, uh, layman and Commander Prieto is here in his place. So let's get this, uh, let's get this going. Consent agenda, councillors, consent agenda has been provided for your review and would any member like to remove an item from the consent agenda for separate discussion?
Would like to approve the, uh, Nega Marshall to approve the consent agenda?
I second it.
I have a first, I have a, I have a motion by Councillor Hart and a second by Councillor, uh, Ripley to approve the consent agenda. Any debate? Hearing none. Everybody, uh, hold on. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Others opposed say no. I also vote aye. Consent agenda is approved. Okay, so let's continue to. Executive session, uh, thirty minutes if Jackie can help me belt the RCWs.
There's an executive session for thirty minutes pursuant to RCW forty-two, thirty, one, forty, section four, subsection B. That portion of a meeting during which the governing body is planning or adopting the strategy or position to be taken by the governing body during the course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiations or grievance, or mediation proceedings, or reviewing the proposals made in the, in the negotiations or proceedings while in progress and RCW forty-two, thirty, one, one, zero, section one, subsection I, to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the, oh, sorry, to which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in a, in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency.
Thank you, Jackie. Uh, at this time, if I can ask the members of the public to wait in the lobby, uh, for thirty minutes. Thank you.
Javier, I'm gonna put you in a waiting room for the next thirty minutes while we have executive session. I'm locking the meeting.
I was wondering if I could delete it off my phone, but now I don't want to. Yeah, very nice family. Looks very nice family.
Oh, shoot, that's not what I wanted.
She sent it Monday, but.
She wants it read into the record? She was missing the America, voice. No, that was Monday Tuesday. That's Monday Tuesday. I watched that.
Jackie, can I forward it to you? I feel like my voice comes and then it goes and it's all over the place.
That's what this cold is. I think you guys did. But you were in the big city, so that's probably where you picked it up.
Are you threatening? I'm a who's taking over? I'm about to shut this down.
I don't have all the backup. That packet doesn't have the backup. I'll watch it tomorrow. Started streaming hundred and eight minutes ago.
Let me know if you get it, Jackie.
Okay. I got it. Thank you.
Stick it right there. That's what I was gonna do. I was gonna check on my assignments. Cause I, I thought I went to, to a part. I know since if I could find, cause I couldn't, it hasn't been updated on the website.
There was two representatives on.
It'd be good. I mean, it would be good if that were the true thing. Shoot, where is it at?
Is it still there?
Welcome back to a regular meeting. Um, no action was taken. Let's continue to active agenda. And I'm losing my voice. Active agenda, utility tax increase, public hearing.
You want me to read that or do you want?
I was gonna have, uh, Jackie volunteer to read it into the record. Yeah. Jackie, do you have a copy of it?
Yes, I do. This public hearing is being held to receive public comments and recommendations considering a proposed increase in utility tax by two percent to fund the twenty twenty-five swimming pool season. The concern is that this hearing be fair in form and substance as well as appearance. Council members, do you have any conflict of interest concerning this issue? Do you, do any of you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this hearing? If yes, please speak now. Council members, can you hear and consider this in a fair and objective matter? If your answer is no, please speak now. Audience members, is there anyone in the audience who objects to the deputy mayor's participation or any other council members' participation in these proceedings? The time is now seven forty-six and the public hearing is now open.
City manager, we could provide a staff report.
So this has obviously been a, a well documented, uh, issue. Um, the two percent increase, uh, worked with finance staff and, and Ben Riley, our city attorney to, uh, to draft the, the language of this, if you so choose to, um, approve it. Um, I, I think some contextual facts to, to put out there, you know, is essentially, you know, what does the increase mean? I think the public should know that. Um, each percentage is, and Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand per percentage point that it increases. You know, if you did two percent, obviously two fifty, you could do the math. Um, we've looked at the base bills, uh, essentially, if you have a base rate bill, uh, we're estimating it's, it's two to three extra dollars per month, uh, per bill at the minimum level. Uh, obviously there would be variables if, if, uh, your bill's a little bit higher or you're a commercial customer, so, um, I don't ever wanna say that the, the impact would not be large. It's a cup of coffee because, you know, for everybody, money's different for everybody, you know, five dollars to me maybe really, really different five dollars to somebody else. So I'll never put that on the record to say it's just this amount of money because, uh, you know, we are asking our residents to step up and help out with the process. So, um, that's kind of my opening salvo. I'll, I'll, I'll send it to Debbie. I know she's worked hard, you know, the numbers and, and Ben, if, if he certainly wants to add anything, uh, to the equation. Raul Sanchez, our director of public works has worked on some of the mechanics of, you know, the operations and we presented that during workshops and things of that nature. So I feel like as staff, we've really tried to give the public as much information as we possibly can on, on our blog, there's information as well, uh, which is sunnysidewa.com, um, which you can access and I can say people have been reading it, um, this past month. Seven thousand people have visited that page. I was just looking at the stats today, so it certainly has gotten, or, you know, people are definitely reading and there's a lot of information about of this particular item on there. So that's all, open it up and I'll, I'll send it over to our, our deputy city manager, Debbie Zabel.
So, um, thank you, city manager. That was a, a great, um, synopsis of where we've been and what we're doing. And the only thing I would like to add to that is this, um, we do have a budget to present to council later on. And within that budget is a commitment letter from the Rotary, which they have very, been very generous and kind in providing some of that. So because of that, we were, originally we had spoke about a two and a half percent um, utility tax increase, but with the, their generous, um, commitment to that, it's two percent. So I just wanted to commend them and, and let you know that.
Thank you.
Can I, so the Rotary, which Rotary was it? Was the noon Rotary or is it the daybreak? So into the record, we could say it's the Daybreak Rotary?
The Daybreak Rotary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abel. Okay, we'll continue with public comment. Uh, call your name. Please approach the microphone and state your name and address and offer his testimony. Well, hold on, council, um, I did have a request that if, if we could increase the time limit. I believe there's a presentation that the swim team wants to present to council. Do I have any objection?
For their presentation?
Yeah, to increase the time limit.
I don't need to do that particularly, but you could allow them the time for their presentation.
You can suspend the rules.
Yeah, do, do you have an objection? Okay, I'll let them. First one on the list is Siskinard. Benji, okay. Uh, second is Janet Agary.
That's the swim team girls. Okay, so they.
Hi, um, actually I'm here on behalf of the swim team and so I have our president here as well, Lexi Pangol.
Can you, um, state your name and the city of residency for the record?
Janet Agary from Sunnyside.
Uh, Lexi Pangol, Sunnyside, Washington.
And then Jackie, I had. And then Jackie, I had sent a presentation that I'd like to do tonight. Perfect. All right, so we're here tonight on behalf of the Sunnyside Rotary Swim Team, the Sharks. That was our 2024 swimmers and that's not even all of them. I think that's about 75 and this year we had 100 swimmers. And that's just a little bit about our board. Obviously, we've got Lexi Pangol, our president here, myself as vice president, and then we have a secretary, a scorekeeper, treasurer, volunteer coordinator, second year league rep, as well as a first year league rep. We have quite a big board. I didn't want to do any of those. Okay, sorry. Okay, just a little bit about our team so you guys kind of know who we are. We are a nonprofit, we're 501(c). We obviously are a volunteer board. We are members of the Mid Valley Swim League and that was, Sunnyside was one of the founding teams in 1975. The Mid Valley Swim League consists of Natchez, Seela, Othello, Toppenish, Sunnyside, Grandview and Prosser. We compete twice weekly in June and July and we hold our champs at the end of July. Our swim team offers scholarships for those that can't afford the fee and we have swimmers ages five to 18. In 2024, we had 100 swimmers, our largest turnout since 2017. And we can accept swimmers from any of the boundary school districts that don't have a pool. This year, that'll be Zilla, Toppenish, Mapson and Granger because Toppenish isn't going to have a working pool this year. And our meets are 100% volunteer ran. We need about 40 plus people to run our meets, so it's a family sport. In order for our swimmers to swim, we have to have family volunteers. And so we get the whole family out there. So, and without our volunteers, there's no meet. And as a nonprofit, we count on our community donations. We do a banner sponsorship annually where our swimmers and the board members go out, ask businesses to sponsor a banner that sits on the fences during our swim meets. And that's how we raise our funds to afford our coaches and to offer those sponsors to those that aren't able to pay that entry fee. The noon Rotary is our major team sponsor, though.
So with Toppenish closing, we are actually now the only 50 meter, woo, meter pool, sorry, from Top Prosser to Yakoma. The other pools are all a lot smaller, 25 yards, Grandviews itself is only 40. Like, there's more up there. So we have actually been asked by the Mid Valley Swim League this year if we would be able to host a regional event, which means anyone in our central region gets open to come down to the swim meet over a two-day period. So that brings people in from Okanagan, Wenatchee, that whole area down into our town.
And that isn't to be confused with the champs that we hosted last year. Champs was just those that were in our league and this is an AU sanctioned event, so anybody with an AU membership in the state of Washington can come.
Correct, and it is something that is yearly, so it's something that's an annual event that we would be able to grow and continue to make bigger here in town.
Because they'd like to keep that event in a 50-meter pool. Toppenish has hosted it in the past, but with them closing, they're hoping that it would be something that we could take on for years to come. Okay. The Sharks swim meets stimulate our Sunnyside economy. At least once weekly, teams from out of town come into Sunnyside. They eat here, they get gas and they see what Sunnyside has to offer. You know, once you visit some of our businesses, you want to come back for those tacos or bridal, whatever it may be. You know, some of our parents walk over that way, but definitely we stimulate the economy in that way here in Sunnyside. And just during our 2024 champs, we had 400 athletes and their families. So say even that one athlete brought one family member with them, that was 800 people. We did not have a clicker there to take in that admission, but I mean, you can see where those numbers would go, even if they brought two people from their family along with the 400 athletes. And that sent families into our local businesses. We did an interactive map where it showed places to eat, places to stay, and a lot of the families use that app to visit those local businesses. And there was people that stayed overnight because, you know, they didn't want to drive home in between that weekend event. And we did get a lot of positive feedback on our park and our facilities at that time. They were all immaculate. The parks did really well preparing for that event for us and we got lots of positive feedback. And then 20, the 2025 regional invite could bring in over 650 athletes. That's what last year's event in Toppenish brought in, 650 athletes and their families. So each year it just kind of grows, so I kind of put that as a minimum that we could bring in. And that next slide is just some of the teams from around, from our Mid Valley Swim League. This year in the Mid Valley Swim League, there was over 800 swimmers. So again, we have that potential, if we host these events, for those swimmers to come in. And with it being local event and something that they could count on annually, we could see larger numbers. Okay, and this one here was just a comparing operating cost for Sunnyside's 50-meter to Toppenish's 50-meter pool. I thought it was the best illustration of cost because they were both 50-meter pools. So this, I thought just illustrated that our pool could be ran at a lower cost and it might be something to look into since costs are one of our biggest, you know, factors into providing the pool to our community. So just looking at that, you can see Toppenish was able to run theirs at a lot lower cost. And all of the information involving costs did come from public records requests. You can go to the next one, thank you, Jackie. And the other pools, I thought it was important to put these on here, too. Yes, they are smaller, but Prosser has an aquatic center along with their pool. Seela, same thing, aquatic center along with their pool. So they are running at costs that we were thinking our pool would be ran at and they're running much bigger facilities, except for Grandview, of course, it's a 40-meter. But even if you double that number, we're not getting to the cost that we originally thought would be associated with running the pool. And then just a little snippet in here. Did you want to do that one? Sorry.
It doesn't matter. Aqua Magazine has found that neighborhoods with community pools and other recreational facilities experience a 28% reduction in juvenile delinquency rates. But those of us that have lived here long enough know that the pool is one of the only places that I know that kids that don't necessarily get along in school can be in that space and never be in each other's space or problem. So it becomes a safe space, so to speak, for a lot of kids because that is not somewhere they feel judged. It's definitely-
Neutral.
Yeah, a neutral space for all of our kids. Doesn't matter if it's just our swim team. I want people to understand that we're here talking about it because of our swim team, but it matters to us more than that. This is our community.
Thank you, and that's all we had for you guys tonight, but if you need any other information, you know how to get ahold of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Brittany Byma.
Hello. My name is Brittany Byma, resident of Sunnyside and also have a business here. I'm here on behalf of Sunnyside Daybreak Rotary, which is the morning Rotary. And I'm kind of, you guys do have that letter from Ron Fox, the president, that's giving a breakdown, but just kind of wanted to let the public know or anybody else that doesn't know these numbers, what we're willing to contribute. We have a lot of past parks projects that we have funded. We did the construction of the skate park, the pathway from Sunnyside to Grandview. Our goal is to fund and create active spaces for children that create a space for them to be outdoors, be active and reduce crime. And we have decided to do with the pump track and everything like that, but right now the pool is in dire need, obviously, of some help. So we've contributed 50,000 to that to facilitate to the opening of the pool. I'll kind of read off a little bit, this letter is to inform you that Sunnyside Rotary, Daybreak Rotary has committed to the fund of the purchase or of a fixed asset for opening the pool in 2025. Currently, the authorization is for the following, chlorine feeder, which is 4,200, system filters, and I think that is included with a pump, so it'd be a filtration system, 33,577 and 14 cents, vacuum head pole, which is 376 and 25 cents, vacuum hose, 224, and then with a total of 38,377 and 39 cents, sales tax amount to be added. And then it says further, Daybreak Rotary has authorized a total of 50,000 to facilitate the opening of the pool. To end, to that end, we are willing to consider additional requests for the purchase of other fixed assets or equipment. If you have any questions, please contact us. There we go. Yes. So, yeah, I'm just a community member that is concerned about the opening of the pool. Grew up in the pool, is swim team member myself and yeah, I definitely, and then as far as the tax goes, I'm a business owner, I'll be affected. So of course, that's always a thing, but just being, getting that information, transparency and everything to where it's going and not going any other place, that would be my only concern as well. So, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Byma. Next one on my list is Teresa Hancock and Jackie's gonna read her statement into the record.
Her message writes, what I would speak to is the burden of the tax increase on seniors. With gas, eggs, rent, groceries at an all-time high and considering that from July through September 2023 to July, through, to July through September 2024, the Social Security Administration has announced a COLA of 2.5% for 2025, which translates to an average bump of $48 in monthly social security benefits and raises the average check for retired workers to $1,968. Given the average increase to seniors, especially low income, is definitely under $50 a month and that, and that utilities have increased, the increase of even $2 a month is a burden. Thanks, Teresa.
Thank you, Jackie. And the next one on the list is Jory Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. Don't want to make your meeting too much longer than it has to be. I think everybody's aware, I think the traffic to the website is, was instructional in that this is something that as a lifelong community member, I started swimming in the Sunnyside Pool in probably 1976. And somebody in either my siblings, of my seven siblings, or my four kids continuously from 1976 till this year, I have a son swimming, he's one of the top swimmers on the team for the Sunnyside Sharks and I've been on the board, I've been the president. I'm currently still an official, official fundraiser. We have to raise about 20 grand a summer to make sure that it runs and it's not that hard because almost any business owner that I go to or individual who I know has a love for the youth of our community have no issues in coming up with that money. So I know the Rotary feels the same way and I love that they've stepped forward to offer their money. And I also want you to know that I think that the citizens should have a right to be able to pitch in for this because it's important for all the reasons that have been stated and that you know, but that also outside of that, if it becomes too much of a burden that I will, and I've said this to Mike unofficially, that I will do whatever it takes to make sure that the pool gets open. I mean, if we had to raise the funds 100% from private donations through programs such as Rotary and whatever, or just through private donations, we could do it. I think it makes it a little bit easier just for everybody to have a little increase in their tax. I do have the same concern as Teresa with senior citizens. And I don't know what the city's policy is in general with people and fixed incomes, if they can apply for some sort of relief from that. I would hope that there is some avenue for that because that could make or break it for elderly people. But I think for, you know, myself, I own property in the city and I'm happy to contribute and I'm happy also to come up with funds some other way because I just think of the things that we have in our city, if we had to build a new pool, you guys just think about that for a second. To get a 50-meter pool, to build one from scratch right now, almost, I don't know of any city right now that would be in a position in our state to be able to do it easily. And the fact that we already have one existing, it's way easier to scratch, claw, come together, figure out a way to pay for it because it's such a huge thing for our youth. We have a lot of problems in our community, but I think most of them come down to, hey, what's going on with our youth? There's not a lot of senior citizens out there causing crime, theft, any of the problems that the police have to deal with or the city manager, except for maybe Julia.
Got to have a side hustle.
Yeah, you know, I'm not going to begrudge you that. Anyway, so, and you know, and obviously we all know that the future of Sunnyside is in our youth. You know, we want them to grow, thrive in all ways here, have something constructive to do. And there's so many different organizations, but I wouldn't, I would say that the pool, having the pool and the city behind it is one of the most important. Because most of the other organizations aren't as, don't require such a big ground investment of the construction of a pool. And we've done that. That part's done. It's staying on top of it and keeping it open because then, we all know what happens if you say, okay, we're going to close this summer, then it becomes much easier for it to close next summer. And so I would, I will do anything to make sure that this pool gets open this summer, whatever it is. So if whatever fails, and I'm hoping that it doesn't, you as the city council, come to me and I will make it happen. And thank you for your time and go Sharks.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. The next one on my list is Javier, which he's, is he still on Zoom, Jackie?
Yes, I just asked him to unmute.
Javier, if you could state your name and city of residency?
Yeah, Javier Lopez, Sunnyside, city of Sunnyside, resident. I just like to kind of urge the council members to kind of reconsider the proposed tax utility, 2% utility tax increase as proposed. While I fully support keeping the pool open, I think the tax is short sighted. It's a temporary fix, no guarantee for long-term funding and worse yet, there's no sunset clause. I mean, you guys could do what you guys could do, what you want with the collected taxes indefinitely, even if the pool closes. But as a parent of a Sunnyside Shark swimmer, I know firsthand how vital this pool is for our community. But we need to have a sustainable funding solution, not a tax with no accountability. Where will this money go if the pool shuts down? Will the residents be asked to pay more even next year? Instead of an opening to tax, urge the city to pursue this tax with a one-year sunset clause to only support the swimming pool operations for the 2025 season, followed by a dedicated bond measure that allows voters to decide on a responsible, long-term plan. Let's be transparent, let's be strategic. A quick fix, a quick tax isn't the answer and our community deserves a real commitment to keeping the pool open for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Okay, that's it on my list. Anybody else in the audience wishes to comment? Council members, any questions or comments on this item? There being no additional?
Just want to make, just want to make a note, but the utility tax is a fair way and it's the only way we have to raise money as a city. And it's fair in as much as it impacts every user. So it's not, it's not just one person doing it or one group of people doing it. It is spread out over the entire community. So that makes it a fair thing, even though as much as we can. I think that, you know, the pool has been, in that particular pool in 1975 and then later on, sometime in the eighties, I believe it was, they added the big, the, was that slide out there and did some renovations to include- And did some renovac- renovations to include, uh, the, the waiting pool before it had been separate. Now it's inclusive inside, so there's the, uh, lifeguards are, kind of can oversee the little waiting pool as well. As the pool is used by a number of people, I mean, there's, there are seniors who use it for their physical therapy. Um, so even though they, you know, and they, they, they know the value of it, and they know the value of having the, the adult laps, lap swims early in the morning, or whenever they can squeeze them in. Um, but the swim lessons, I think, are the most important thing that I am, reason why I support the, the utility tax. Children, backyard swimming pools, canals, kids, if they don't know how to swim, they drown. If nobody's watching them. And I've covered many drownings as a reporter in Sunnyside. And they're just, it's horrific how many of those little kids didn't know how to swim. So for that safety reason alone, I would be in support of the utility tax to make sure we offer swim lessons to, to the children of our community and the outlying areas.
Thank you, Councilor Hart. Uh, just, any further comments or questions from councilors?
Uh, Deputy Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
Um, you know, one, one thing, uh, I wanted to address something that Mr. Lopez said, that this was a quick fix. That, you know, it, the mechanics of it may be a quick fix, but this was not something that we took lightly. I just want to put on the record, and you know, that the Finance Committee has looked over this a lot. We've looked at entrance fees, I've met with the Sharks, I've visited the Daybreak Rotary, I've been to the legislature asking for grants, I've written articles. So I've worked with Debbie, um, Raoul's presented to the public. I mean, we, this is not something that we've taken lightly. And, um, and I'm not criticizing what Mr. Lopez said, I'm just saying that, you know, we, and myself and my staff has turned over every rock to get to this point. And, you know, believe me, I, I feel for the seniors. And I know that every dime counts, especially in this economic environment. Um, you know, and I, I can't, I have to be Switzerland, I don't want to give the perception that I'm taking a stand one way or the other, because that's not my job. My job is to present the facts to you guys. And, you know, I feel good about, you know, what my staff did. I mean, they worked tremendously hard, and I'm super proud of every one of them. Um, because we really worked our butts off. So, you know, from everybody from Radio Cadena to going to C Mar and asking people, do you have money for this pool? How can we get it? Can we get it through CDGB grants? You know, operational grants are almost impossible to find. So, long story short, I, I want the, to assure the public, the other thing I'm gonna get out there, and perhaps I didn't message it enough right, but this, this money will go to a specific bucket every month. You know, we can put it out there, it's not gonna go to anything else. I mean, you have, this council's word, I know you have Debbie's, Abel's, or mine, that if we're not gonna use it, we'll take guidance from the council next year or so. Well, you know, this is a transparent group of individuals. You know, this, this is a transparent group of council people, so, uh, I'll get off my stump speech here. But I just want to let the, the public know that I've worked, and I'm just, I, that's why I love this community. Everybody's come out and said, you know what, we need this pool, you know, for the kids. So, uh, anyhow, I'll, I'll be quiet, and I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and I'll leave my comments for our next item, which is, uh, of course. Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Frosto.
May I, oh, um, ju- just to add, and, and I guess it's also for clarification, thank you for, um, giving me the floor. There is a sunset to this. Correct me if I'm wrong, council.
Yes, there is.
It's December twenty twenty-five. While we, when we will be revisiting. Um, and to Mike's point, um, and just to add, is that we've done everything we could up until this point, literally, and, 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 you know, and I, I commend the Finance Committee, Councilor Ripley, Deputy Mayor, um, Councilor Vazquez, um, for all the work that y'all did. Um, all the extra hours that y'all added to your schedules away from your families to make sure that, uh, other families had this resource available to them throughout the summer. That's so important to our youth. Um, the city manager, I mean, other coun- uh, Councilor Hart, um, we, we've all worked, uh, the staff. Um, I, I echo, uh, the city manager. Thank you all so much for y'all's efforts. Um, and sometimes we're always between a rock and a hard place. And any decision that we make is not gonna be the most ideal, but I think it is something that we have to do now um, in order to continue moving forward. Um, and, uh, adding again to what Mike said, this is gonna, if, w- we're gonna try to continue doing everything in between. If that is searching for grants, if that is continuing the conversations with our legislatures, um, if that is connecting with, with our community members, with Rotary, we're gonna continue leveraging the resources that are in front of us, um, in, in order for this not to be a permanent, um, uh, you know, a permanent thing. Um, we don't want to continue burdening our community. That's, that's none of our intentions, um, here. Uh, but, um, but, but we are always placed, um, in front of difficult situations, and many times we're having to make those difficult decisions, and, and this is, this is one of them.
Thank you, Councilor Frosto. So, so just as a reminder, our next item is, uh, discussion and voting on this. So, uh, there being no additional comments from the public or council, let the record show that this public hearing is now closed, and the time is eight twenty P M. Let's continue with item B. Item B, increase utility tax by two percent to fund the two thousand twenty-five swimming pool season. Uh, Mr. City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, uh, thank you to the public for weighing in, and certainly diverse perspectives. And, you know, it's a, it's a decision that rests, obviously, in council's hands. So I think all the facts are there, and, and, uh, I think, uh, again, proud of the staff for the work they did to provide information to the public and the council. I feel like we've been transparent. Uh, again, we've all worked extremely hard, uh, to really, to get the facts out there. And i- if the council chooses to do this, this will give staff some buffer time to look into things like, um, parks districts, uh, levy lid lifts, um, uh, like some folks in the public have mentioned, you know, do, d- do we do specific bond measures to support the pools? And then, you know, the danger of that, you put it in the public's hands, and maybe they tell you, we don't want it. So, um, you know, so it gives us options, um, on the, and you know, if you say no, the pool closes. So that's it.
Ms. Sable, you want to add something?
Thank you. I would like to, um, just reassure, um, the gentleman that was online and the public that the funds, um, would be collected and placed into a separate fund. They're segregated from the rest of the general fund. Not only will the revenues be segregated, but also the expenditures will be accounted for in the same fund. So we could very easily, you know, twice a month, every council meeting, bring a report to show this is how much money we've received, this is how much money we have spent. At the end of the year, um, if there are funds left, they would stay in that fund. And we would be able to use those for the next pool year. Um, if the, the pool opens the following year. Um, and I also wanted to point out, um, for the, um, person online, there's actually, in this ordinance, there are three different places that call out the dates. It calls out, um, what the tax rate is, and it's effective beginning March first through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. It talks about the amount that's to be collected, the percentage, and it says again, in the same, in that same section, another, you know, it's, it's gonna start on this date and on this date. There is a section that does provide for it to, um, terminate earlier or for the council to extend it. But if council does not extend it, if council does not terminate it, it terminates on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I just want to make sure everyone understands that.
Got it. Council, any questions, comments? Councilor, or, I thought she was raising her hand, but she's just coughing. Go ahead, Councilor Hart.
It's all right. Again, as from my perspective, as, uh, the safety issue as far as keeping the pool open and, and raising the money to keep it open is, is very, that was the reason the c- community first built the first pool here in Sunnyside. Uh, the one that was, uh, in seventy-five, it's all been about safety, pool safety, water safety. We're surrounded by canals, because if we didn't have canals, we wouldn't have the economy that we have. Um, we wouldn't have crops, we wouldn't have anybody living here, it'd be just a bunch of sagebrush. So it's, to me, it's, it's just been, it, my kids, like everybody else's kids, learn to swim there. I don't know how to swim, I could dog paddle a little, that's with having taken lessons. But I was really made sure that my children were gonna know how to swim, so for that reason, for safety. And then also my grandchildren and my, and my GGS, those are the great-grandkids, for those of you don't know who GGS are. Um, but it, to me, it, I think that one of the things that this gives us some time to put together, we've talked about the, the lid levy, but also the possibility of creating a park and parks district, which would fall into the pool being, because people in our community and the Sunnyside School District come in to use our pool. But they don't, you know, so why shouldn't they get a little bit of, uh, donate a little bit of more money through, that you could do through a, uh, a park and rec di- And the other thing that we could probably work on, and I think would, would be another, I know it sounds, this sounds crazy, but if Posser could create an aquatic center, and if Seela could have an aquatic center, with our fifty-meter Olympic-sized pool out here in Central Park, why don't we have an aquatic center? I think that's something that we all need to think about, and that is a huge moneymaker for those other communities. It's gonna cost some money, extra money, but if we have the utility tax, I know we have a sunset on it. But if we just think about it, the possibility of creating an aquatic center and making that pool year-round for our swim teams at the high school, the boys' and girls' swim teams at the high school, in addition to the Sharks, and in addition to the senior citizens' lap swims and the, and the swimming lessons, and all the different regional activities that are coming up for Sunnysides to use the pool. I think that that's something that down the line, maybe right away, we all ought to get together and start thinking about what it would be like to create an aquatic center in Sunnyside. Plus, I think we need to do the Parks and Rec District. I'm just dreaming, I'm just dreaming, but I don't think it's impossible.
We have to start somewhere, right?
Exactly right.
Uh, further questions from the council? Well, let me try this. On my behalf, uh, you know, thank you, Councilor Frosto, for, for acknowledging the work that, you know, the Finance Subcommittee has done. Uh, we really went in there line by line, and, yeah, you know, we, the, the, the pool was ran in two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-three in a way like they had an open checkbook, right? They had ARPA money, and we don't have that money anymore. So we went in there, we cut out all those expenses. Um, we saw where we could, you know, kind of run a little bit like Topinish. I'd like to get the numbers, um, the same-sized pool, uh, they run more efficient, uh, managed a little bit better. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna put it to the city manager to, to, you know, to, to challenge ourselves, um, to manage our pool, uh, much better. Um, so we don't have to be here next year. Um, we need a, a, a real solution. Yes, this is a temporary fix for two thousand twenty-five. But once you close something, you know, it's, it's kind of hard to, to reopen it, um, once it's closed. But this is a temporary solution. We have talked about the, the, the Parks District, which I love the idea. Um, hopefully, we could sit down with Ms. Sable, um, and maybe put it up for a vote for this year. And that could be our solution for two thousand twenty-six. But also keep in mind that this is temporary, this is gonna end December thirty-first of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Um, and Ms. Sable, also, if, if, we could end it earlier, correct? If we, if, if we come up with enough funds, as say, in October, you know, I like the idea that Mr. Anderson, um, has, I, I had a similar idea to sell, you know, advertisement on the, on the fencing. Um, you know, I'm, I'm a business owner too, I'm willing to help out with that as well. So I think there is a lot of business owners here in Sunnyside that will come together. Therefore now, I, I, I think we, there's something that we should start with. And it's not gonna be something that we're gonna give up, we're gonna keep working on it, we're gonna keep bringing ideas to the table, and hopefully, we could, uh, we could terminate this tax sooner than, than December. Anything else on council?
No. You look like you really want to say something, but. Yeah? No. Okay. Well, at this point, then, probably we'd need to bring it up for a vote, is that, do you think?
Well, counselor, um, what is the desire of council?
Well, I move to increase utility tax by two percent to fund the two, the twenty twenty-five swimming pool season. Um, increasing to fund the, the twenty twenty-five swimming pool season.
Thank you, Ms. Hart, for reading that for me. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I'm gonna have Jackie, uh, help me do a roll, a roll call vote. Um, I have a first, I have a motion by Councilor Hart, and a second by Councilor Frosto.
Deputy Mayor Galvan?
Yes.
Councilor Hart?
Yes.
Councilor Frosto?
Yes.
Councilor Ripley?
No.
Mayor, you have three yes votes and one no vote.
That's a pass, right?
It is.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Jackie, motion passes. Let's move on to items.
Can I ask just a question to that? So the utility tax, um, once it's publicized, goes into effect five days after March, so that would be. Okay. Five days after publication and then the local newspaper. But March first is the, soon as it will begin, okay. I think that's important to let people know, because that'll be on their March or, or on their April bill. Okay. Ouch. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, council, um, moving forward, item C. American Heart Month proclamation, and this is my item, so let me, let me try.
Thank you, guys, for being here. Thank you for your input.
Thanks, Tony. Have a good night.
Do you want to give, uh, Counselor Ripley some time?
Yeah, just give her a minute there.
Yeah. This is hard, y'all. I, I commend y'all. It's not easy being here right now.
Right here.
Yeah. Could you all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. We've had, we've, we've had some challenging times together.
For sure.
These decisions aren't easy, but we gotta make them.
Yeah, that's, that's a tough one.
I do, I, I don't know. Kind of have to, is that your proclamation there?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, goodie.
Counsel, if there's no objection, we'll take a five-minute recess.
No objection.
Okay, counsel.
Talking to the choir.
The next item is item C, uh, American Heart Month. And one thing I've learned in council is, is, you know, sometimes we need to take a loss, sometimes we need to take a win, and I think this win, uh, this proclamation could be a win for us. It is Valentine's, it's, you know, it is, has to do with the heart, so no wonder they chose, you know, February. And I know that a lot of us have family that have heart disease, have died of a heart attack. You know, heart attacks, they, they come as, as young as, you know, teenagers, sometimes playing sports in high school. And this proclamation, just, uh, so we can educate, you know, so we can bring awareness to, to our community that it's out there. It affects a lot of people. It affects, I have some stats, you know, one in every five deaths, so it's the leading cause of, of, of death in, in the United States, and I think the world. Forty-eight percent of U.S. adults have some form of heart disease. You know, so it's, it's really, it's something that we need to really look at our health and, and, you know, promote healthy eating, exercises. You know, we just had a vote for the pool. That, that provides a lot of, a lot of exercise for, for our youth, for our teens, for our seniors. So yeah, that's, uh, that's my, my ask for counsel is, if we could approve this. Any questions?
Well, I move to approve the resolution proclaiming February twenty-twenty-five as American Heart Health Month in Sunnyside.
I second it.
I have a motion from Counselor Hart and a second by Counselor Ripley. Thank you, Counselor Hart, for reading it into the record. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'm gonna ask Jackie to do a roll call vote.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Frosto?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Galvan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, there's four yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Now I'll try to read it into the record. Whereas heart disease is responsible for one in five deaths in the United States each year, American Heart Month is an opportunity to remember the loved ones lost to this deadly disease and raise awareness. And whereas smoking, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, lack of physical activity, obesity, diabetes, and prediabetes are some of the leading factors that could contribute to our risk for heart disease. Most importantly, we learned, we have learned that it is never too late or too early to improve your heart health. And whereas this month, this month, I encourage all citizens to prioritize their health and education and educate themselves about heart disease. Through our continued efforts together, we can work to reduce the change, the change of heart disease and ensure both present and future generations of Americans live healthier lives. And now thereof, I, George Galvan, Deputy Mayor of the City of Sunnyside, Washington, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the state of Washington, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim February two thousand twenty-five as American Heart Month in the city of Sunnyside. In testimony whereof, whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause that the seal of the city of Sunnyside to be affixed done at the city of Sunnyside this twelfth day of February in the year two thousand twenty-five. Thank you, counsel. Move on to item D. Sunnyside Marketing Plan, Mr. City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Uh, so this proposed marketing project, it aims to increase awareness about Sunnyside as a tourist destination through various marketing strategies and including digital advertising, social media campaigns, promotional materials. So the intent of this resolution is to take control of our destiny a little bit more, or actually quite a bit more. We've farmed it out in the past to various entities, so this allows us to bring it in-house and really, uh, look at our own pathways in terms of marketing. So I think most jurisdictions typically farm it out. I, I think I'm a unique bird when it comes to city managers. I've had a lot of media experience in the past and, uh, you know, a lot of marketing that I've done. I think it's well-known. I've been a journalist. I've had blogs. I, I own a blog site, Hispanic Food Network. We've got fifty thousand followers, so I know how, you know, I know growth strategies. I, I've been there, done that. And I think, um, taking it in-house and allowing me to kind of create, recreate our brand a little bit is going to be really helpful. We've got tremendous assets in Sunnyside from agriculture to hops to, you know, beer. I mean, we have so many things. Our, our, our Mexican food scene is incredible. I mean, we have some of the best Mexican restaurants in all of the, the Pacific Northwest. So being able to leverage some of the things we have and then really being able to create content that we want to create. And then I think the other thing is, um, I'm recognizing we have some amazing events. The Implement Parade, you know, my first one in person. What an incredible event. I mean, you don't, you, you can't understand how incredible that event is until you witness it in person. I really want to do more on-the-scene type, um, content that's sharing actual what's going on. Our Cinco de Mayo Festival, uh, helping Rotary promote that, leading up to things. And then also our Airl Fest. And so, uh, what's inside your packet, hopefully you've gotten a chance to, to read some of that. And, and we can certainly go over it if, if you'd like, um, just a little bit. Jackie, I think you can queue up, uh, it says marketing plan for Sunnyside, and hopefully my voice will hold up. So I've been working on this, this marketing plan for the past couple of months and, and, uh, just, just looking at various strategies, and you can go ahead and scroll up. Uh, so we're looking tourism events, uh, marketing strategy, strategies, I should say, marketing timeline, monitoring metrics, and, and this is something, if the public wants to read it, they can go into our packet and, and really digest it. But, uh, our executive summary, we have rich agricultural heritage, uh, growing tourism appeal. We really want to focus on signature events, creating content, uh, engaging a new website. This will give us the opportunity to do some of that. Unified PR media management strategy and, and really develop a cohesive strategy for public relations. Modernize our marketing channels, utilize our social media and digital platforms and support local economic growth. So tourism, we really feel like ag tourism, our food tourism, our, our big events, our Hispanic community are all really, um, marketing elements that we could leverage. So you can advance, please. Uh, again, signature events, um, everybody's online, so continue to, to develop our, our social media strategy that, that Jackie will be a big part of and, and myself will, will really be managing these together. I really anticipate we'll work with various production companies on specific content creation for leading up to events. We also feel like, to give you sort of a quick synopsis, because it's a pretty long marketing plan. Food tourism, we really feel like could be a, a huge opportunity, uh, because we have, I've lived all across the country, you know, Phoenix, Arizona, and I will say our Mexican food rivals Phoenix. And George, I know you've lived in Phoenix, and we both share that. I mean, we, I was at El Conquistador today and had the carne de res, and oof, well.
That'll be.
I'm telling you, on a cold day, that carne de res is the best I've ever eaten. So, you know, th- those kind of things. And I think video is really the, the wave in twenty-twenty-five, getting it on Instagram and our various channels. So I, I think that's something that we really want to do a lot more of, is that content creation. Do true social media campaigns and really market our tremendous events that we have, like Cinco de Mayo, the Implement Parade. But also, how do we market varietal? How do we market our wineries? You know, how do we market our restaurants that are here? How do we market, um, you know, even the port, you know, these kind of things? I, I mean, there's so many things that are untapped in Sunnyside that I really feel like the comprehensive strategy will, will really help us attract people to, to this area and get them, you know, we've got to get heads in beds and, and give people a reason to really want to come to Sunnyside. So, um, I know we've got more, more things to go over, but if you guys want to ask me any specific questions about it, I know, I know you've had a chance to read it in your packet.
Counsel, is there any questions?
I, having, having also worked on the aspect, taking the, uh, the media angle past years, well, during my career as a, as a journalist here and for a community journalist, you know, covering all of these different events. I mean, we have things like public art that, uh, we don't even advertise hardly at all. I mean, even our murals that we have that are community-supported, I mean, we, we don't really recognize those as much. So those kinds of things are some things that are kind of, they're, they're part and parcel of, of what makes sunny side what it is. I think, you know, the business of, um, in that marketing plan, you know, as we really market the pool with now knowing that we not only have the swim championships that come in for two or three days, and then now this regional event is going to be coming, uh, bringing in, what was it she said? Somewhere in the neighborhood of six hundred, six hundred and fifty athletes along, just for that one, plus all their moms and dads, and there's room in the park to tent. But there's also several restaurants or several hotels and things that, you know, people need to know about. So I really think, having, having covered all of those events and then having worked on the LTAC Committee, as a deputy mayor knows, that's, uh, really responsible for bringing more events and to using the lodging tax to bring more events to enter our community. And so all of this is part and parcel of making Sunnyside really shine in the Akma Valley. And I think that having lived here since nineteen, well, I moved to this town in eighty-four, but I live, I worked here since seventy-five. So, you know, I think that, um, anything we can do to pretty up our town and make it more attractive to, to outside neighbors, you know, we have people from Posser who come to Sunnyside to shop and eat. They like our restaurants. And he's, he's not kidding. I've ate Mexican food, and I, no, you don't, because you get good stuff at home, Deputy Mayor. But I, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a big foodie and I love to eat, and I try out Mexican food in Leavenworth. Why did I do that? It was Leavenworth. There should have been German food I was eating, but my friend liked the Mexican place, so she took me there. Ours is so much better. Our food here, we have, I mean, from the Taco Tacks, the food guys, the guys who take out the burritos to the guys out in the farms for breakfast in the morning in the fields. I mean, we, we really have a lot, a lot of things we can just, that, that marketing report plan could just, we could, we could just capitalize on all of those things, I think.
Absolutely.
Any further questions? Counselor Frosto?
No, I have no questions.
And I, I would usually have questions for you, City Manager, but I know we have a lot, an LTAC meeting tomorrow, so I'm going to save my questions for you then. Um, so yeah, just come prepared.
But in the meantime.
Always will when you're asking questions, Deputy.
So what is the desire of counsel?
Move to approve, and I'm going to second it.
Okay. I have a motion by Counselor Ripley and a second by Counselor Hart to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to request one hundred thousand dollars in lodging tax funds to implement the proposed marketing project. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'm gonna ask Jackie to do a roll call vote.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Counselor Frosto?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, there's four yes votes.
Uh, motion passes. Continue. Well, before we continue the item E, I know in the rules and procedures, we have a three-hour limit for our meetings. Um, do we need a motion to extend that?
Deputy Mayor, I looked at the rules and it's only for regular meetings.
Regular meetings?
Three-hour.
Okay.
But it's.
So it doesn't affect this?
We probably, what do we need, another forty-five?
We don't have a, we don't have a time limit, so we'll try to, we'll try to, yeah, let's try to.
I'm in favor of that.
Thank you, Jackie. Item E, Fifth Amendment to subcontract agreement for Sunnyside Municipal Airport Environmental Investigation. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm gonna toss this one right to Raul Sanchez.
Good.
Thank you, City Manager. So what I brought forward here is the Fifth Amendment to subcontract agreement for the Sunnyside Municipal Airport Environmental Investigation. So what this is, this is, uh, something that's been ongoing since two thousand and eight. So in two thousand and eight, the city was notified by the, uh, Washington State Department of Ecology that a complaint was submitted by a citizen of a possible contamination in the area when an old pesticide spray shed used to stand at the airport. DOE conducted a, a sampling at the site and determined that there was, in fact, some contamination. So what this is, is, is the Fifth Amendment to, uh, what's been going on. This is under a Department of Ecology grant, um, that it has been funding this. So the city of Sunnyside and Department of Ecology agreed on a, on an order to do this work. So it's something that we, we need to continue to do. So in this amendment, um, it has what is required for us to continue to do with, uh, Mount McDonald, uh, which is the, uh, the, um, do a feasibility study, analysis, um, and a cleanup action plan that's left. What this will do is go back to ecology when it's all done. Ecology will review this and then determine what's going to be the next steps as far as cleaning this up. This is a one hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty that would, um, cost out of the grant to do this study and the, and the cleanup, um, action plan. There's a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, nine hundred and thirteen dollars left in the grant. So there's plenty of money to do this, and this is, uh, would be on a reimbursement process from, from the grant.
Counsel, is there any questions?
Um, yeah, I guess, when you said that there was, um, the total grant was in the nine hundred thousand?
No, what's left is a hundred and ninety-four thousand.
A hundred and ninety-four thousand.
Yes, work has already been done, um, out of the original grant.
That was, that was the original amount?
The original amount was two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and thirty-six from back when the grant first came out. Work was already done. And then, um, nothing was done since, for a while. And, uh, now this is, this Fifth Amendment is to do what's left, which is the feasibility study and the cleanup action.
Finish, to finish the cleanup.
Well, it's an action plan that states based on the study is how, what's based on, on Mount McDonald will put this together, provide it to ecology, ecology will review it. If they approve this plan, then that would be the next step to do the, the cleanup.
Okay. So the forty-two thousand or plus, that's for Vermont, for McDonald?
Thousand, two hundred and sixty is to continue to do the feasibility study and the cleanup action plan.
Okay, okay, that's, thank you for the clarification. I was a little confused there. Okay, okay. That's, thank you for the clarification. I was a little confused there.
I have a few questions. If any of the other counselors have any. Um, so I see this started back in two thousand and fourteen at a cost of twenty thousand dollars. The original fee, the original subcontract fee was twenty thousand dollars. So are, are they coming back every so often and, and saying, hey, we need more money? We need more money? Or why hasn't this cleanup been completed if, if this started in two thousand and fourteen?
Cause they went, it went through different, different steps. And actually, the whole thing started back in two thousand and eight. Then in two thousand and ten, the city was notified by colleagues that soil samples, they, they also did some monitoring wells. There was some testing that was done to determine the, the contamination. Then in two thousand and twelve, the city approved the resolution, uh, agreeing on a professional engineering service with Pacific Ground Water Work, which is now Mott McDonald. And then on July fifteenth, uh, two thousand and thirty, the city of Sunnyside, uh, did a remedial investigation work plan to do the work and contact P G G, which is the same group. They did a phase of the investigation. Then from there, the next phase was to include specific sampling in the area determined. So some of that has done certain sections, but then there's been amendments to, to the original agreement. And now we're in, in, in the fifth.
I just, I guess my concern is that next year we're going to need a sixth amendment. Is it pretty much close?
Yeah, this is just to finish this grant.
Okay.
Then the grant's done. This is what's left. And then after that, once we're done with that, then ecology will then review this. And for the cleanup process, that would be on another grant that would, ecology would help with for the cleaning.
Okay.
If we were not to do this, if we just said, well, we're not going to continue on.
Then we won't.
We would be responsible for all that out of the city's dollar instead of a grant because the money is there to continue to do this.
That makes more sense. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you for the, the timeline too, how, how the process has gone through. Thank you for that.
Did you want to weigh? It's a deputy mayor.
Go ahead.
And you have a lie. He's saying this. I don't know why.
There, okay. I've never seen one of these things take less than ten years. It seems that these types of projects, they take a lot of time because before the agencies can sign off, they're trying to prove a lot of negatives. And they gotta check it and check it and check it and stuff like that. So that, like I said, I, these things just forever. Um, they take a while, but they get done. It's just, it's just, it takes, it's a slow process.
Thank you. It's a lot of sense. Counsel, any further questions? Hearing none with desired counsel?
Um, I would, uh, make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract amendment with Mott McDonald LLC for the Sunnyside Municipal Airport Environmental Investigation.
I second it.
Thank you, Ms. Hart, for reading that into the record. I have a motion by the, by counselor Hart and a second by, you know, counselor Ripley. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'm gonna ask, uh, Jackie to do a roll call vote.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Counselor Frosto?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, there's four yes votes and zero no votes.
Motion passes. So move on to item F, Medical Services Officer, parentheses, M S O, position approval. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, deputy mayor. So as you mentioned, this is for a medical services officer for a fire department. Chief Hallbrook is here and, uh, I'll let him, uh, take over from here.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Um, so just kind of reiterate some previous conversations that we've had, presented to the communities. So thank you guys for your time there. Um, so I'll keep this a little brief than, than prior to. But again, we are requesting, um, the refulfillment of the medical services officer position for the Sunnyside Fire Department. We obviously take, uh, public safety in, uh, in high regard in this community. And this would be contributing towards our, towards our efforts there. Just for some clarification, this was a position that was previously filled and funded. However, was removed from the two thousand and twenty-four budget in two thousand and twenty-three, despite not being the intention of, of fire administration. So, um, I also just want to make some clarification as well that this is a, uh, fully one hundred percent EMS funded position. So I'm just going to read a real quick excerpt, excerpt, uh, from the cover sheet, just for the record and clarification. For clarification purposes, despite the city's current budget shortfalls, the EMS fund is healthy and more than capable of assuming and maintaining the expense of the position. In addition, the EMS fund supports all EMS functions, including equipment, apparatus, operations, staffing, et cetera, and cannot be used to subsidize the general fund. So in short, I understand that, um, you know, we are, uh, coming a long way and working with it with the, um, some budget constraints, but this is a EMS funded position, um, entirely will not impact the general fund and comes from a, a healthy fund that is, um, more than capable of, of maintaining and continuing with this position. And so, um, like I said, I'll keep it brief, but open for any questions and if, um, not to put, uh, Ms. Abel on the spot, if there's any like to clarify on the financial portion I didn't cover, um, that we discussed it. So, good.
Counsel, any questions? Or Ms. Abel, do you want to weigh in?
The only thing I would add to that wonderful presentation, um, is that this would be included in the first budget amendment because it's not a budgeted position. So, um, the costs for that would come from the ending fund balance of the EMS fund.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Abel. Counsel, any questions?
That actually answered my question that I, that I had. But the other question that I, is a, must, did you have something? Cause did I jump on your?
No, go ahead.
Cause I tend to do that and I apologize. Um, you can blame it on my ADHD. So this, we had a medical service officer and it was terminated for whatever reasons in twenty-three or in twenty-four budget.
The, the individual occupied in the position ceased their employment in twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, it wasn't a termination. It was just, kind of, they left, they left the department to station. Okay, we'll leave it there. Um, so bringing this person back on board, the, uh, can you give me the reason for, um, bringing that person back? I, it, it probably says, you probably have already explained it, but what is the real purpose of the medical service officer?
The medical service officer, it's a great question. And I did cover it, but I more than will on to.
It's just to clarify.
Yeah, absolutely. So that, that role is, is to supervise and oversee our EMS operations. And so, um, the Sunnyside Fire Department, just like most fire departments in this country are very heavy on EMS. In two thousand and twenty-four, uh, eighty-one and a half percent of our call volume was EMS centered. What allows us to operate to the level that a department does is our ambulance and EMS portion. That's, that's quite literally what keeps us functioning at the level that we're at. Um, in order to maintain those services, you know, we take pride in our services with our patient care, our equipment, our apparatus. And again, providing that service for our community and surrounding communities. But in order to stay up hard and continue to expand on those, um, having somebody centric on the EMS operations is, is, is much needed.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Counselors, any further questions? I mean, in my part, I, I would usually have a ton of questions, but I want to thank Chief Hallbrook. He did bring this, uh, to the finance subcommittee. And that's where I was able to ask my, you know, the tough questions and he was able to, you know, kind of change it around. So he could explain a little bit better on these, on these, on this presentation. So I appreciate that. Um, uh, but, I mean, I think it's, I think it's good on my side. I mean, it, we used to have it. Uh, we're a big city. We're a big, um, a big crew. So we definitely need this, uh, this, this position. Um, is there any further questions from counsel? Okay. Hearing none, what is the desire counsel?
I move to approve.
I second.
Okay. I have a motion by counselor Ripley and a second by counselor Frosto to approve resolution allowing the reimbursement of the medical services officer position for the Sunnyside Fire Department and adopt the ordinance amending the two thousand and twenty-five city of Sunnyside classification and compensation schedule. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'm gonna ask, uh, Jackie to do a roll call vote.
Deputy Mayor Galvan?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Counselor Frosto?
I'll sugar it too.
Counselor Frosto?
Yeah, so I, I sorry, I probably didn't hear me. See.
Thank you, counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, there's four yes votes and zero no votes.
Motion passes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, item G, Equipment Maintenance and Repair Services Interlocal Agreement with Yakima County Fire District Five. Mr. City Manager?
And we'll continue with our fire chief since we're speaking fire.
All right. Um, city manager, counsel, thank you again. So what proposes you now is an interlocal agreement between the city of Sunnyside and Yakima County Fire District Five. What this entails is strictly, um, uh, emergency, um, maintenance and repair. And when I say emergency, we're not talking necessarily specifically to, well, we are speaking specifically to emergency vehicles. But this is a, when we have no other options, this is not, um, an ILA that is going to, uh, circumvent our city mechanics, for example, or any other options that we have. This is simply if, uh, maybe a bad example of three in the morning, we're on a structure fire and the engine's stuck in pump gear and we are literally stranded. This gives us kind of a safety net because Fire District Five does have three, uh, emergency vehicle technicians on their payroll that are used to their on a, on call rotation. And so it's, uh, a little bit of a safety net for us, if we're to run into these issues. Knock on wood, we haven't really up to this point. But I guess now that I just put it in the universe, I guess, you know, you know what happens now. But, uh, so speaking with Fire District Five, they've been willing to, again, offer those emergency services. We are very pleased and happy with our city mechanics. They've done fantastic. All of our P M I. This is simply to cover the things that are either outside their scope and or outside their, um, timeframe and availabilities. So, um, there's no budget amendment. Um, I anticipate the question would be, what's the cost if they, um, do implement these services? I reached out to them. Um, they explained that as a, as a government entity, they can't necessarily make money. So their current, um, twenty-twenty-five shop rate is seventy-five dollars an hour. If you guys have been in the mechanic lately, especially for big rigs, you know, that, uh, those shop rates are very high. So, um, the seventy-five dollar an hour rate is, uh, to be honest with you, very, very, very reasonable. But again, just asked for approval, um, to move forward with ILA. So we have, uh, an option for emergency services, our repairs on our apparatus if, if they are needed, not expected, but again, just a, just a safety net. So, any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Well, I'm always in favor of, of, uh, making sure rigs stay on the road and get to where they're going. Don't like being stranded. So I.
Never fun.
Yeah, I think that this is worthy of our, a consideration of an interlocal agreement. So I would stand for it.
And I would too, just like to clarify on there too, is there's, there's no cost associated with the ILA. It's only if we are to utilize those services.
So we only get charged if we use it.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you. See, what have we done in the past, I guess, for, for something like this? Is it like an outside mechanic, a, a private mechanic that we would take it to?
So for, on, on a regular med, uh, basis, so, you know, I guess, if I understand your question correctly. So all of our primitive maintenance oil chain was obviously done in house. Anything that requires, uh, an emergency vehicle, vehicle technician, so it's going to be something that's going to be pretty much outside the engine housing regarding pumps, emergency lighting, that sort of stuff. That does still get outsourced, um, to, uh, predominantly a vendor based out of Yakima. But I kind of compare it to like trying to get into a doctor, you know, you only have so many, there's only so many E V Ts. So you want to get in, it's a three month wait, you know? Uh, it's kind of a similar process with, with working on emergency vehicles. And so if this is an emergency, a, we, this needs to be done right now because this apparatus is stuck at a location or whatnot. We can't wait those three months. So this is kind of that, again, that safety plan.
And that business in Yakima, I assume, is in it to make money. So their shop rate's going to be way more maybe.
Correct. And so I did reach out to a couple of different, to try and get some comparative rates. Couple of businesses weren't real forthcoming. They said, well, it's based on the job. It's so like, I couldn't quite get the concrete, you know, comparative answer I was looking for. Um, but, uh, I, I will speak on from my own personal experience that, uh, that the rate provided from District Five is more than reasonable.
Were their mechanics based out of District Five?
They're based out of their shop in Zilla.
Zilla, okay.
Yep. And they, so they can do either everything at their shop in Zilla or a lot of stuff they do, uh, mobile as well. Again, because they're used to, for rig breaks down the side of the road, you know, expensive tow. So if you can lip it along from there, they'll make it work. But, um, so there's a couple of options there.
Counsel, any further questions?
Well, I like the, the idea that the shop is in, in Zilla. So, and has a mobile component to it. So that makes it much more attractive, I think, as a, as a, as a fail, fail safe.
In case in point, we've had work done out of a shop in Spokane. And so it's, it's a day's work just driving it over there and driving back. And then you do that twice to drop it off and pick it up. So the proximity is a, is definitely a plus. That's for sure.
We only have the one in Yakima, so we're in competition with all.
That's, that is correct. The only other options are again in Spokane or the next closest would be the Tacoma area.
Okay. Counsel, uh, what is your desire?
Well, I, I move to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with Yakima County Fire District Five for emergency equipment, maintenance, repair services.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Hart, for reading. Now I have a motion by counselor Hart and a second by counselor Ripley. Uh, any debate? Hearing none, I'm gonna have Jackie do the roll call vote.
Deputy Mayor Galvan?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Counselor Frosto?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, there's four yes votes and zero no votes.
Motion passes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, item H, Police Vehicle Surplus Disposition and Purchase. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, thank you, deputy mayor. We have, uh, Commander Jaime Prieto here tonight. And, uh, I think Chief Lehman, we now know why he's gone because he knew this meeting was going to run really long. So he invited you to speak on his stead. But, uh, like you mentioned, this is, uh, about police vehicle surplus. Uh, and they're asking counsel to approve a resolution declaring certain vehicle surplus and authorizing disposition, authorizing the purchase of two fully equipped police vehicles. So I will, uh, toss it to Commander Prieto to, for anything that he'd like to add about this.
So we, so we had two vehicles that were in collisions in the past few months. And this is to replace those two vehicles, which are being fully covered by the insurance. So there is no cost to the city. They will refund the money through the insurance, through W C I A.
Okay. Anything you want to add, um, Debbie?
So in addition to getting, um, authorization for the city manager to, um, approve the purchase of these two vehicles is to also surplus the, um, the vehicles that were totaled.
Okay. Thank you, staff. Uh, counselors, any questions?
One more thing.
Go ahead.
So the price on here is going to be probably a little lower than the actual cost because the vehicles we're trying to get already come with a prepackage. So I think all we would have to pay for is the, uh, computers and the, uh, the lettering and stuff like that for the Sunnyside Police Department on them.
The detailing or?
Yes, for the, uh.
The Sunnyside Police Blower.
That is correct, ma'am.
Yeah.
Cause they already come with the, uh, set in a package.
Okay.
Oh.
Thank you for clarifying. Uh, counselors, any questions? I have a, I have a couple of questions. Um, so these two vehicles, were, were they part of the lease program or did we own them outright?
One of them was part of the lease. It was one of the newer Tahos that we had.
Both of them are owned.
They were owned by the city?
Yeah, one, 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 this is one that happened last May. And one of the most recent ones.
Okay.
We had two, we had three, three vehicles that were totaled. Two we owned, one was leased.
Okay. So that's, we own, it's not like we have to pay the lease some money or, okay, gotcha. Thank you.
But these two are, are.
Are owned, okay. Counselor Hart, do you have a question?
That was my question.
Okay. And also, um, I, I saw that they're going to be Fords, but it doesn't say, is it an S U V? Are we getting more SUVs, more?
Yes, they're, they're both Ford Explorers.
Ford Explorers, okay.
And we were so fortunate because there's been such a shortage of vehicles.
Yeah.
Um, we, we looked on the state vendor, we found this one vendor, they have four or five. four or five. I think an order must have been canceled, I'm not sure, but it's, we called WCIA and they're like, order them.
Perfect.
Get them going.
Okay.
Have to wait, we'll get immediate delivery and
Okay, so we should see delivery within the next week or so then, after this?
Once we make a motion here.
To get them in, okay. Uh, counselor, any further questions?
No.
Hearing none, what is the desired counsel?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Counselor Ripley and a second by Counselor Hart to approve a resolution declaring certain vehicle surplus and authorizing the position and authorizing the vehicles, the purchase of two fully equipped police vehicles through the statewide vendor contracts for these vehicles. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'm gonna ask Jackie to do a roll call vote.
Deputy Mayor Galvan?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Counselor Frausto?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, there's four yes votes and zero no votes.
Motion passes. All right. Council members reports, other reports, announcements and/or questions by council. I'm gonna start with Counselor Ripley.
Okay. I do think we need to look into the change in the stormwater rates. Somebody came before council to change the stormwater rates, and we need to look into that. That will hopefully lower the citizens' rates. It will make it right. It will, but you don't
I'm not understanding.
Somebody, I can't remember who it was, somebody came before council and talked about the stormwater rates, that the way we're doing it is wrong. That the businesses are not being charged what they are using. And the citizens are being charged more than what they use. And so it needs to be
And Deputy Mayor, I know Raul's got his hand up, he can explain.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So last year, at the beginning of last year, there was a presentation on, on the stormwater rate. And the, the presentation was, because right now, the rate is based on parcels. And, and because it's based on parcels, the big commercial lots are paying the same as any residential lot. And so right now, at the rate it is, it's, it's, it's across the board. And so by going to an ERU, that would break it down in half because then the resident, right now, the resident is carrying the burden on, on the whole thing. So then, when you break it down to ERUs, then a parcel could have ten, twenty, thirty ERUs or more. They would be paying that rate multiplied by the, the dollar amount per ERU, and they would be paying what's, what would be right for them, whether it's industrial, commercial versus residential. And, and so the stormwater rate is based, based because of traffic. So if you're a big store like Walmart, you have a lot of vehicles coming and going using the city streets, which is putting out their contaminants that are affecting the stormwater versus your car that goes to your house once or twice a day. And so that is the difference, and I believe that's what you're, you're talking about. And so where it ended was, that was brought to council at that time. City staff needed time to, the finance director needed time to break that up in the system within the city from parcels to ERUs. And that's where it, it got held up.
So piggybacking on that, so then our, as, as Counselor Ripley said, so is there a way for us to move forward on that? So that we can make it maybe fairer, so the residents aren't carrying the bulk of it? Is there a better way to do it?
Well, it just needs to come back to council once again on, on the city side is, is to break it down to ERUs within the system.
Well, so that would make it more fair.
So that would, that would take it away from, yeah, change it from a parcel to an ERU, where then that actually goes down because if your parcel is, so an ERU, let's just say it's ten thousand some square feet, and that's what your property is, then you're only paying for that ERU, which would be half the rate of what it is now. If whatever you are beyond that, then you would just pay the equivalent to that, that fee multiplied by your square footage of your property.
So right now, I think it's like six twenty-five per parcel. So if this goes through, it could potentially reduce it to half, maybe, right?
So that's for residents.
That's where Counselor Ripley says it could offset some of this utility tax.
And, and the big users, the big commercials, they would be paying what would be fair in their end because of what the traffic that they're bringing in to the streets.
Okay, thank you.
When and how can we bring it back for discussion?
How soon?
Well, at, at the time, it got held up because of that, because in the, in the city's billing system, it needed to break down the way it is now from parcels to ERUs. And that is something that we would have to discuss what that would take from the finance side.
Okay.
Okay, well, definitely something that we could discuss at our next study session.
Can we make that happen, Mr. City Manager?
Absolutely, so I'll, I'll work with Raul on that and we'll
Okay.
Look into, yeah, that's, that's been something that's been kind of lingering out there and, and I'm learning about it too. So yeah, it's just that disproportional share, I think, I think you captured it. The Walmart example is perfect, you know, they're not, you know, clearly they have more of an impact and so, yeah, we'll, we'll figure that out.
Okay, let's carry on, Counselor Hart.
Wait.
Go ahead.
Yesterday, I went to a mock emergency exercise for, Chief Hobrick invited me and, me and this sick one over here. And it was, it was, I loved it. It was a mock emergency, can I tell them what it was about?
Absolutely.
Okay, it was, it was a Hanford site, and they released a plume of radiation. And so these guys at the emergency center, they had, I think it was eight, nine tables set out. It took them two days to get everything set up for this. They had their computers out there, their printers, they had tables for logistics and for planning. And, oh, I can't remember, I should remember all, I was there for four hours. But it was, it was amazing. You don't realize the behind the scenes, what they have to do. They had to move ten thousand cows because it was in, it was in the Sunnyside area, Sunnyside Granger. Grandview? It was, it was, you know, the plume, wherever it affected, they had to make sure that the wildlife were safe. It wasn't wildlife, the cows and stuff, and they didn't have a place to put, if the dairies didn't have a place to put the cows, they had to ship them somewhere where they could find, where they could, out of the area. And so they found the Yakima Fairground, and there was one table that was working on that. And there was more than just moving these ten thousand animals. They had to get ahold of the Cattlemen's Association and talk to them to help move them and stuff. And it was, it was just, it was crazy to me. And then they had to order hay, and then they had to have water for all these cows. I mean, you don't understand the underlying things to these emergencies. And I asked them, so if, if you guys didn't have this place set up, what would you do? And they said, thank God, we haven't had that emergency. And so
Mock up with that?
Yeah, this was a mock emergency that was, they had to put that on every paper so that, and we couldn't even talk to anybody on the outside because if we let loose what was going on and didn't say it was an exercise, then people out in the, there would freak out. And I really enjoyed it, I, and, oh, they had conferences every, what? Forty-five, fifty minutes, and all the chiefs went in there and they had to give a report of what each one of their group is doing. And
Wow.
I really enjoyed it, I really thank you for asking me to go. It was, it was awesome.
Glad you could make it, we appreciate the support.
Did I forget anything there?
No, you, you got it covered pretty well, it was, we like to call controlled chaos, and that's, you described it well.
They did a good job.
Sounds like I missed out. Let me know the next one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Counselor Hart?
Last thing I got to go to was an actual hazmat incident involving meth cooking in a house across the street from the Saints Christian High School.
Those aren't as fun, the real ones, they're not as fun.
Well, it was a real one, and I wondered for a long, long time if that persistent cough wasn't somehow, I should have sued Labor and Industries and my boss for sending me out with no idea that's what I was getting into, but that's another story. Uh, no, I wanted to, to comment on a couple of things. I noticed the cleanup over its South Hill Community. Oh God, where am I going? Community, the South, hmm, South Hill Park, yes. Where the heck was I going? I was going someplace else. The community center and the, the signs over there has been cleaned up. There's been a tag on that for quite a long time and just kind of drive by and forget about it. But it's been taken care of, and thank you very much for capturing that and taking care of that.
Public works and
Yes, absolutely. Good job on the crew there, that's, that's wonderful. I did want to say that I think I heard somewhere that a warming station has been set up in Sunnyside. But last I heard, I think it was Rod's house, but then I'm not really sure about that, so I don't really wanna, I wanna double check on that and find out where it's at. I know the Yakima Herald today listed some warming shelters in the valley, so I'm sure there's, somebody's setting one up here in town, so we gotta find out where it's at. The other thing I wanted to mention too was that a local group is gonna be doing a tour of community art here in Sunnyside, but they're extending their, their, their tour to Grandview and Prosser. But I think having been to Grandview and Prosser, I still think we have the best community art in the valley. Well, if, if you, if you draw the line at top, at Granger and don't go into Top Edge, we have some really spectacular community art, and anytime you're just thinking about, you wanna admire some of our statues and some of our murals, we've got some really beautiful ones out there. Also wanted to comment on the fact that attended the economic, the Community Economic Development Commission. And the, the people there are beginning to really hone in on a first-time goal of getting started on a Chamber of Commerce or something of, of that nature. So I think that's gonna be one more thing to, another feather in our cap to be able to have that as part of our marketing. I think it's gonna be primarily business oriented, which is what's really needed in, for our, our local small mom and pop businesses. So I'm looking forward to working on that. I think that might be all, except to wish y'all a happy Valentine's Day, and I hope you get lots of chocolate. I'm counting on it because I'm coming by to check your desk, so I can get a piece of chocolate.
Thank you, Counselor Hart, Counselor Frausto?
Uh, nothing to report, other than I know we began discussion about the possibility of getting some more information around the pot shop or the marijuana shop. And I know, Mike, you were gonna take the lead on, on getting some more information on that and, and then perhaps leading it back to a council vote. And I bring it up right now, since the discussion today revolved around money and us being in an incredibly tough position. Financial hardship, if you will. So that's something that could bring revenue, and I think we all, we all, we all discussed this and, and we're agreeable to this, or at least majority of us were. So just, just wondering where that's at and if that's also something that's gonna make its way back into chambers.
Thank you, Counselor Frausto. Well, I was hoping Counselor Frausto would talk about our trip to Olympia, so I didn't have to talk about it, but I guess I'll, I'll talk about it. Just amazing, amazing red carpet, you know, for Sunnyside. They took us into this room full of politicians. And we were right in front of them, right? We weren't expecting that, so we were able to speak in front of the Republican side of, of, of politicians in Olympia. And they were really, they were really receptive, they were really listening to our concerns and, and our needs in Sunnyside. You know, just to name a few, Senator King, Senator Warnick, Senator Torres, Representative Mendoza, Manaharist, Representative Dan, Representative Barra, I'm sure I'm forgetting a few of them. But I've been sick this whole week, so you might excuse me for that.
Great.
You know, yeah, I'm sure the city manager, you know, touch a little bit about that in, in his report. Also, CEO of AWC reached out to me, so I'm gonna be serving on a, on their scholarship board. They offer scholarships to seniors and I'm gonna be part of that board, so I'm looking forward to, to being there.
Very cool, congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor, and to address Counselor Frausto's question, you know, that's something, I, I wanted to get the full decision out of the way and then focus on that. I think the data's there, I'm actually planning on reaching out to someone from the Cannabis Board tomorrow. I've got a contact there who can provide a lot of the data that we need. I think annex, you know, some of the anecdotal things I'll do is, is visit Moxy and, and Prosser just to kind of get a, a boots-on-the-ground feel. And then I think what we, we need to do with some direction from council tonight, and I'm taking of the approach that we had in Pasco, is that we had some open forums where we invited the public and, you know, was in the chambers, and we, we, we actually held it in a few different places as well. But it gave the, the, the public a chance to weigh in on both pro and con with, with counselors present. And we did a couple of those forums. And then there was a workshop element where we, you know, on, once I've gathered all the facts, which, I mean, I anticipate I can have that in about a month, I don't think it's gonna take me a tremendous amount of time because there's a lot of data out there. And then, you know, where we, where we take it from there is really in the council's hands. You know, my, my role in this is just, I, I can gather the information for you and, but I think the public forum elements will be important to, to have the opportunity for the public to weigh in, put it on the record. You know, see who's for it, who's against it, what, what the criminal elements are, you know. Chief had weighed in the other day, which, you know, was surprised, I think a lot of people were surprised about what he said, you know, there wasn't, you know, and that's something that I've heard throughout my time when I was at Pasco, because they sent me on a, a mission to Spokane. And I think the, the biggest surprise for me when we, we talked to their council and their police chief was, you know, we actually have more problems at the Circle K, I remember that resonating with me going, oh, okay. But anyway, I'm, I'm on top of that, counselor, and, and, and I'll start working on that. Only other thing I wanted to mention, like Counselor Galvan mentioned, great reception at the Olympia and during our lobbying session. So kudos to all the counselors, I mean, they really knocked it out of the park. And we visited probably like six or seven offices, we were moving and grooving all around Olympia. And, you know, by the end, we had a great script and we were like, you know, we knew the narrative and, but, so it was great. And I, we're going after grant money. And it really seems like the lawmakers want to help us, they were even suggesting, hey, can we help you out with your gazebo area? Can we help you out with your soccer fields, you know? So what I did over the weekend, I was working with our lobbyist and just creating different asks for the, the legislature. So we've got like six or seven asks from gazebo money to Tinaoff Park, to our well structure, and, and I'll just leave it with this, you know, congratulations to Raul. He was able to secure a DWSRF grant slash loan for one point six million dollars. And, you know, I feel like a lot of the fruits of our labor are gonna start to come to fruition, it's taken a lot of hard work. I mean, Derek and I are beating the bushes for seed grants. You know, they're really, the YCDAs really wanting to help us, I'm really confident we'll get, you know, several million dollars there too. So it's gonna take some time, but you know, the staff is working really hard. So it's going to take some time, but you know, the staff is working really hard to on behalf of the citizens.
Very cool.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And I did skip an item. Upcoming council meetings, Jackie?
So our next meeting is scheduled on Tuesday, February 18th, and that will be a study session with action in regards to a wastewater treatment plant digester heating system upgrades award and to authorize the city manager to sign any contracts that go along with that. And then a discussion related to an update for the police department and well updates, DWSRF loan, and a presentation on lobbying efforts as well, and anything else that comes along.
Thank you, Jackie. And just, Counselors, if you have any items, make sure you talk to Jackie or City Manager. Well, there being no further business.
Any more reports?
He did his report. I skipped, I skipped this one, and then he did his report.
Done.
I skipped that. There being no further business to come before council, and without objection, I adjourn this meeting at, I don't even know what time, 9:41 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Wow.